Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM, slightly thereafter, and we are streaming the meeting. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the order this meeting of the town council, and in the interest of what I believe is the reason for the majority of the people here, I would solicit a motion from the council that after the public hearing on the planning board's review, that we would move then to item old business to the crop cannon issue, and then proceed in that order. The motion is made and seconded to make that change in the order of the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll declare the public hearing open. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive a review by the planning board on the proposal that proposed an agricultural overlay district. The council has in its package the written report of the planning board chair in which he stated that the planning board found that the proposed ordinance not to be in compliance with the Little Compton Comprehensive Plan. And as a result, I think that alters our process that we'll undertake next.
That's correct. It's a predicate for matters of this nature, that the planning, by statute, that the planning board weigh in as to whether or not the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance complies with the comprehensive plan. After a meeting, the planning board voted unanimously that it did not, citing two relevant sections of the comprehensive plan. That's in Mr. Steer's letter that is in your package.
I think it would be helpful that we hear from those who came expecting to comment on this. However, I would ask that you understand that I will ask for a motion that we can make and hold in abeyance the vote on, but that motion would be to return this matter to the planning board for their review and the implementation of what they have suggested is a different approach.
I'll second that motion.
That's my motion. It's made and seconded. Is there further discussion? I'm going to hold in abeyance the vote on that motion, simply to hear from those who are here that wish us to hear something regarding this proposal. If you understand my motion, its purpose is to reset from the idea of an agricultural overlay district and to have them come back to us with an alternative proposal. Yes, ma'am?
I was going to try to stand up there, but I think I can't make it, so I'm just going to stay here. Even though you've made this motion and it's been seconded, I think it's important that certain questions are asked. My name is Natalie Elias, and I live at 21 Richard Avenue, and I want to make sure that the question and the answer in my statement after are recorded for the record. So, before asking for this liquor license, this is the second time that Carolyn Secana Vineyard Dionysus has asked for this liquor license, I'm asking Attorney De Sisto and U. President Mushon, has Carolyn Secana Vineyard Dionysus gone before the LCACT and the State of Rhode Island Agricultural Land Preservation Commission to ask if this proposed restaurant where they will sell liquor and is in extended use above and beyond what they are currently doing to find out if it's consistent with the deed to development rights and whether or not it would be allowed?
No.
They have not?
That's correct.
Okay. Please record that for the record. This approval is required, and the town council should have received from Carolyn Secana Vineyard Dionysus a certificate of approval suitable for recording from the LCACT and the Agricultural Land Preservation Commission. If the town council has not received this, this matter is not properly before the town council, and the town council should not have even considered the vineyard's request for a liquor license, and especially should not have asked Attorney De Sisto to write a special agricultural overlay district allowing them to sell liquor. The Secana Vineyard's deed to development rights has paragraph after paragraph which emphatically states, "What is the most important thing," and this is a quote from their deed to development rights, "is the perpetual protection and preservation of agricultural lands. Anything that is not related to agriculture is prohibited." So, I think the vineyard and the town council put the cart before the horse again, because I'm feeling a sense of deja vu. This happened once before, when a stage was built without the proper certificate approving this from the LCACT and from the State of Rhode Island. So, nothing else should be done. The planning board shouldn't do anything, the town council shouldn't do anything, Attorney De Sisto shouldn't do anything, until the vineyard Dionysus goes before the LCACT in the State of Rhode Island and asks them if this is even possible with their deed to development rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Larry Anderson, and Natalie stole my thunder because I was going to say the same thing.
Thank you.
So, Bob, I have a couple of other points to make. I'm going to give Carol the letter, I'm going to submit you the copy of the deed for development rights, and a document in which, it's my own work, where I, to satisfy myself about the history of the operations at the vineyard since its inception in 1975, I went through the town council minutes since 1975, and to document all the licenses that had ever been given to the vineyard for any purpose. So, it's unofficial, it's my work, I just provided that to Carol as a resource to anybody that's interested in finding what the actual historical record of uses is at the vineyard for the last 50 years. And I'm going to just give you these, I won't read this whole thing, but I'll give you, because Natalie summed it up better than I can, but there are a couple of points that have to be made. The point is that the history of this is that from 2008, the three public agencies, the Agricultural Conservancy Trust, Rhode Island Agricultural Land Preservation Commission, and it was Department of Agriculture, spent $2.25 million of public money for property interest in this property, this lot, $2.25 million. And the vineyard, Natalie said the same thing, we've been through this before, the current owner ignored, as soon as they bought the property, ignored their obligations under the deed for development rights, built a building and end uses that were problematic in terms of illegality. Life has gone on, as Natalie said, they've done the exact same thing here by introducing a new non-agricultural use proposal that, again, you can take the time to read what the easement actually says. I would just say that I am not, in principle, opposed, I'm for supporting agricultural accessory uses on legitimate agricultural properties in town. We have tried both before, back then, and I was on the council, you'll recall, we looked at a proposal to do this, we tabled it in 2019, we've never returned to it. There's a basic issue of fairness to all property owners and farmers to come up with a standard for new uses in genuine support of agriculture that are fair and available to everyone by rigorous standards and procedures. This proposal just isn't it. I won't go on with regard to this, except to say that there are many other agricultural properties in town where the development rights are held by the Agricultural Conservancy Trust and these other agencies, using the identical language that's in that easement, hundreds of acres in town. So, to single out this property for new use simply sets a terrible precedent, a problematic precedent, for the town essentially opening the door for use that may be in conflict with the public's interest in hundreds of acres of property in town by virtue of these easements, which tens of millions of dollars have been spent. So, there's a way to do this, but it's very complicated to deal with. So, the only other points I will make is that the proposed use, on its face, is not an agricultural use. The Right to Farm Act does not specifically identify restaurants or cafes as agricultural operations, as defined in that law, and the Superior and Supreme Court in Israel case found that the act allows for non-agricultural operations to be restricted, regulated, limited, or prohibited by law, regulation, or ordinance. That's the law. So, there's no law, except what the town wishes to say, that entitles vineyard or any other agricultural operation to this use, which is, as the solicitor and building official that told us, is a prohibited use in the residential district. I don't know if he's here, but at the planning board meeting last week, the attorney Ray Holland, who was speaking for the vineyard at that time, made an assertion, which I feel I have to answer. He referred to the settlement involving the town, the Eliasins, and Christina Carlson, and the vineyard with regard to the previous litigation claiming that the cafe use was, I don't want to put words in his mouth, was a basically grandfathered or established use by virtue of that settlement. I won't go into the details, but that settlement talks about weddings, concerts, and other events. No other uses were mentioned anywhere in the documents involving that settlement. So, that's another problem that we have, is that we've been giving licenses for uses that are arguably not legal on some of these properties. So, that's an issue that's evolved over the years, that also has to be cleared up. But, thank you, Natalie, you stole my thunder, but thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Bob, pass West Main Road. I'm very concerned with the new amendment, but Secana Vineyard has always been trying to push the buttons of the town council. To change farming, it would mean it would change even the word farming. A farm is a farm, not a piece of land with a restaurant on it. They strongly ask to stop this change forever. Stop allowing landowners to change the beauty of our town. Allowing Secana Vineyard's variance to go through allows anyone to gain the same privileges. Where do you stop it? You're opening a huge can of worms, which, please, don't do that. I mean, not just for now, forever. It should even be thought about ever again.
Yes.
Amy Vary, 120 West Main Road, and not to beat a dead horse, so to say, but I express the same sentiment that has been expressed thus far, for the language of this proposed agricultural overlay to suggest that having a bar is an agricultural activity, strange common sense. It's not as if Carolyn Secana Vineyard is manufacturing Johnny Walker and Tito's vodka. They're not. They're only supposed to be manufacturing, whether they do or not, is an argument for a different day, but they're only supposed to be manufacturing wine. That is what the property is designated as. So, to make this giant leap of faith somehow and suggest that in order for them to survive, they must sell gin and tonic is ludicrous. I'm sorry. You know, if they're not able to be viable being an agricultural practice, then perhaps they can reexamine how they're operating their agriculture. I know another item on the agenda today is the crop cannons, and without going, delving and jumping ahead in the agenda, I would submit that while the crop cannons may be annoying or disturbing, as I live next door to them, they're a legitimate agricultural practice that has been employed for as long as I've lived at my property, and they serve a purpose, to preserve the crops so that they can be sold and they can be utilized. Now, we have here, in this instance with the agricultural overlay, the suggestion that in order for the grapes to survive, we must sell a gin and tonic. And I think that's just ludicrous with all due respect. So, I would respectfully ask that the council scrap this proposed agricultural overlay. Thank you.
Hi, Gregory De Jong. I live on West Main. So, I have a hypothetical question. If this is approved for Carolyn's Vineyard, I have some property that we gave the developmental rights to the Ag Trust. Could I build a restaurant on my property? Or does the Ag Trust just totally get rid of every agreement they've ever made? Because I'd like to, if she gets to build one, I want to build one.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what's your answer?
That's a hypothetical question.
If you let her build a restaurant, could I build one on my property?
Excuse me, do you have an existing restaurant now?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an existing restaurant now?
No, does she?
Yes.
Oh, on property?
What, the request is for a liquor license for an existing restaurant.
Okay. Well, then, can I apply for one?
You could, yeah.
Okay. So, what's the point of your question?
Your hypothetical was, could you build?
Right.
The answer is, you can apply for it.
Right.
The difference is, there's an existing restaurant on this one, they're asking to be allowed to serve alcohol at the existing restaurant.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I ask.
And we can't speak for the LCAP on that. In other words, it's a different situation.
Yes, ma'am.
Andy Ryan, 45, Pigeon Brook Road. I'm concerned that you're sending this back to the planning board with the idea that, I remember when they got, when we had this noise ordinance problem, and we had a hearing, there was a room, probably with at least this many people, really upset because of the amount of noise, and that noise ordinance got tweaked just a hair that allowed them to be really annoying and stay within their noise ordinance. So, you essentially enabled them to ruin their neighbor's quality of life. I remember that very clearly. I remember one lady speaking, I think she was studying for the bar and couldn't sit in her house because the noise was so long. You know, and you watered the ordinance down just enough to be completely annoying for everybody that lived around there, but didn't actually do anything to help the situation. So, I would ask that if the planning board does review this, that they not open a can of worms by just barely changing this just enough, so that maybe there's a little carve out that you have to have an existing restaurant to get a little bit of a liquor license, then it opens up a can of worms, and then you have a whole bunch of traffic there or something. I think we have a planning problem in town, and I was kind of pleased to see that the council was looking at zoning rules and maybe adding new types of residential zoning or different kinds of zoning, because I think we could look at the town zoning, and we could deal with lots of issues with a comprehensive zoning plan, and deal with the Airbnb issue, or any of the other issues that we have in town. My neighborhood is a private neighborhood that has to pay for the road that one of our neighbors uses because the town let them have an easement onto our property, right? Lots of people in town have issues with our zoning and access, and these issues that the planning board could take up in a large, comprehensive attempt to address some of these. And I would ask you to think about that, instead of just sending it back and asking them to make a small tweak, because I distinctly remember, and I'm sure most of the people in this room remember how that small tweak, really, all that did was let them legally create a lot of noise.
Well done. 45 at 146 West Main Road. I am totally opposed to this carve-out, a special privilege for one group, one park. I think it's contrary to the spirit and the intent of our laws. So, I'm totally against it, and it is spot, and it is spot zoning. I have taken legal advice, not my own, other people's advice. It is spot zoning, whether you like it or not. If it's a duck and it quacks and it walks, it's a duck. So, it is. What I would really ask now is, what is the reasoning behind sending it back to the planning board? I mean, that's totally not the process that we had before. Why don't you repeat the process? New instructions to the council, and move it forward that way. So, can you answer the question? Why are you not going through the process that you started with and giving it back to the planning board, for them to come up with a law? Question, babe?
If I could answer that question, the purpose for taking an action was to apply a proposed solution. That proposed solution clearly has very strong negative response from the community. That's not to say that we thought it was a wonderful idea and proposed it in order to solve a problem, and that was the only way to do it. The planning board has already spoken to us about the fact that they have, this is not in conformance with our comprehensive plan, and our question back to them then is, is there an approach by which we could arrive at a conclusion that is in conformance with our comprehensive plan? It is the planning board's announced intention to look at it in the same manner in which they looked at the solar ordinance, and use that for this purpose. I don't want to suggest to you that this is put out there, and this is what it is, and that's the last we're going to hear of it. This is an applicant who put forward a request for which this was the proposed solution.
So, wouldn't it be better for you and the people handling this to consult with the planning board and then go back to the drawing board yourselves? You're not our lawyers, we have lawyers here, highly paid, let them and you do it. And the other thing I will say is that Mr. De Sisto made it very clear at the planning committee meeting, that he did not come up with this idea, he was distinctly embarrassed by this idea. And so, I think it came from the council, and you think it's a really bad idea, and then you should go back and fix it, not kick it down the road or give it to the planning board.
I take umbrage to that. I had nothing to do with it. I don't think any of us had anything to do with that. I don't, don't point that at us. That was not created by the council. I've done a lot of dumb things in my life, but that wasn't one of them.
I accept your word.
Let me just say that the process is specifically that, when a change to the zoning ordinance is proposed, that is the step the council takes. So, that's the reason for involving the planning board. It doesn't do us any good to have a second opinion that likewise suffers from the same deficiency of not being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, this is to be solved collaboratively. This is not a dump it on the planning board and see what they come up with. It's required by the zoning ordinance, and that's what we're doing. Yes?
Natalie Elias, 21 Richard Avenue. I have two points to make and another question. Attorney De Sisto says they have a current restaurant. They have a cafe. It's not a restaurant, they serve light food. The question is, there's a couple of questions. Did they go before the LCACT to get approval for that cafe before it was approved? It's pretty murky on whether or not that was allowed, because cafes aren't allowed in a residential zone either. So, they don't have a restaurant, they have a cafe. My next question that I would like answered by Attorney De Sisto and President Mushon is, I pointed out the legal issues with their deed to development rights. Before you tell anyone to do anything else, are you going to go back to Dionysus and tell them they need to go before the LCACT in the State of Rhode Island to get approval for this intensification of use, as their deed requires?
May I answer?
Yes.
The first thing is, is anytime food is sold in the State of Rhode Island, under the Zoning Enabling Act, that's a restaurant. The state does not make a distinction between a restaurant, a cafe, or a cavern. They're all restaurants. That's the first thing. So, it's a restaurant. They might sell light food, but it's a restaurant. They could sell full meals, still a restaurant. That's the first thing. So, what I do is, is whenever I refer to food establishments, it's always as a restaurant. That's the first thing, because that's what the Zoning Enabling Act says. The second thing is, is as far as, I'm actually familiar with the conservation easement. It could be an open issue, but I don't entirely agree with your assertions here, that that's something that, because there's a restaurant there now, and there's been a restaurant there, it seems to me for some years, it predates my involvement as solicitor by several years, that that violates the easement. Otherwise, why wouldn't there be any type of an action in between now and then? That's something for the LCAP, not for the town council. Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement goes to the LCAP, and also to the state, and also the federal government has an easement too.
And so, it's an intensification to get a license, a liquor license.
So, to me, what you'd need to do is have the LCAP get involved in that. That's, to me, that's what I'm hearing. The third thing is, the gentleman said that I was distinctly embarrassed, and that it wasn't my idea. I disagree with that assertion. Since I'm the embarrassee, I can tell you that I wasn't embarrassed, and I can also tell you that when the issue came up, the suggestion of an overlay district came from me, not from any member of the council. So, I just, I'm sorry, but I just...
You can't think so of the tree planting.
Exactly right.
That is totally clear to me. I'm sorry if I put it wrong.
Exactly, but, you know, here's the thing. The idea of the dogwood, that came from me. I just want to clear that up.
Well, I wanted to ask one question. If the council meets and decides they're going to okay this with the zoning board and everything, you're opening up a can of worms, because if you give to one, you give it to anybody else in the town. And this isn't what, I was brought up here 93 years ago. I want it kept the way it was, it'll never be the same. But, you've got to remember what kind of a community you want. Do you want it filled with restaurants and selling liquor all the time, or do you want it, a restaurant here or there, they might have a glass of wine? We've been down this road before, and I feel that if you take, give just one little inch on this, it's going to explode. Just remember that.
Thank you. Yes?
At the previous meetings, when this came up and the proposal was made, you did mention an overlay district. That was in the motion that the council approved, so the council instructed him to come up with an overlay district. But, at that meeting, and I think I proposed this as well, you said, I said, that once the vineyard had been informed, as they were last year, that they had to resolve the zoning issues because this was a prohibited use, they took a year, did not do that, and came back with the same proposal. At that time, we both said that there were two ways, if this could be resolved, there were two ways to do it. The council could go through a process, but eventually they could amend the zoning ordinance in some way, or the property owner could make a proposal for a solution. That's where the responsibility lies here. We're facilitating, where is the owner? She here? She never comes. The signatory for the application is Carolyn Rafaelia. It's her obligation to cooperate with this community and come forward with her proposals. It's not our job or your job to solve her business issues. So, you can just deny the license and make them solve the problem, but why should we sweat it? Have them come up with a proposal, and then we can have at it. But, it's their responsibility, they know what the law is. It's a prohibited use. I will only say, I still don't understand why the council, knowing that cafes and restaurants are prohibited use, has gotten in the habit, which is not an ancient practice, of giving a food service license to the vineyard, as they do every year. They have some, they have a way to limit this prohibited use as well.
Could you please just deny the license?
What was your question?
Could you please just deny the license for the vineyard? I mean, it doesn't seem that difficult.
That's not, that's not what's before us. Yes, I think the answer is we could deny the license.
So, you put it on the agenda for next month, to deny the license?
Well, the license has already actually been denied.
Okay.
The issue when it came up was that it doesn't comply with current zoning. The issue when it came up was that it doesn't comply with current zoning. So there is no license pending right now.
So why, why change the zoning then? Why, why, why are we doing this? No one wants it. Ridiculous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I would actually like to make a point. My name is Christina Carlson. I live at 178 West Bean Road. I believe all of you can hear me. And I would like to, to build upon my colleague's point here, that this is costing the town. You're a town that's concerned with high taxes. The fact that we have already had three town-related meetings about this subject carries with it implicit costs. There's the cost of the organization. There's the cost of your time. There's the cost of my time for being here as an abutter to make my opinion known. I don't see that the owner of the business, who wants to make her business more profitable by having this license, has put an equal amount of money forward to actually do the background work that needs to be done in order to have us, to have us, us spend our own town money, our own town tax money, to consider the opinion. I mean, this is Larry's point. If they haven't done their background work, why are we spending town resources proactively to consider a request that is not fully, that does not have all its bells and whistles put together? Why? And as a political scientist, and I am a political scientist, it leads me to ask questions about why the town is so afraid of this one particular business person? That when they say jump, you guys say how high? I know you can't answer that for me. I have my own opinions, but why? Every person in here, we are not working. I don't know about you, but I, I make a certain amount of money an hour at my job, what I could be doing, except that I come here in order to defend my property values. Can you answer me that? Forget it, I don't expect you to. This is not right. This is not the way governments normally function. There's a cost benefit ratio, and I've made that point before. I did. And you told me exactly the way the town vote functions, that one business vendor can come in with a proposal and you guys will do what you need to do to consider it. What I'm saying is you need to make, you need to ask respectfully that the person making the proposal do all their background work before they come to you, because otherwise it's just a waste of everybody's time, just to do it.
Thank you.
I value my time.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote on the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you to those of you who have added to the knowledge of this. And I appreciate your, your time and your effort. I say that quite sincerely. As to the question of why we do things, I'll reexamine that. But my purpose in this is not to satisfy an individual. My purpose is to try to move the entire town forward in a direction. And I appreciate the comments that have been made that say that you think we're not doing that. I hear it. Thank you. Next item then, in accordance with our vote earlier, is the issue, old business to crop cannons. We have, in addition to those letters of complaint, or the letter of complaint that was filed by Ms. Alme last time, we now have a series of additional letters of complaint, Hugh O'Mara, two from Susan Corey, Bill Hewitt, two from Alice Benedict, two from Donna Kent and Chris Donovan. Those are all, with Kate Alme as the initial writer, are all part of this package that we're looking at. So the question then becomes, what action ought we to take?
So at our last meeting, the town clerk was supposed to send letters out to all the farmers in town, and I believe she did, for them to come in and have a work session with the council, whoever had the crop cannon, so we could see if we'd come to a resolution. Is that correct, Carol? If you was.
I wasn't supposed to send to all farmers.
Okay.
I was supposed to send to the farmers and the property owners that were involved.
Okay, all right.
That was done.
Right. And I understand you got two bags that said that they weren't the owners of the crop cannons?
I had only verbal responses.
Okay, all right.
No one claimed for the crop cannons to be theirs.
So obviously whoever's got the crop cannons doesn't think this is a nuisance issue. So Bob and I went up before the last meeting to Kate's, and the crop cannons were going off pretty frequently. I went up to Windmill Hill yesterday at 3:00, and there was four blasts at 3:04, four at 3:06, four at 3:15, four at 3:18, four at 3:30, and four at 3:32. So obviously there is a problem up there. They weren't coming from Kate's property. I talked to Kate, she said they haven't been in there for a couple of weeks, so. They've gone across the street, they're on the west side of West Main Road, down from Seaspray Way. I went there this morning at 7:26. I stayed till 7:46. There wasn't any blast going off. And then I went back there today around 3:00 again, and there wasn't any blast. So whether they figured they'd shut it off for today because they knew it was going to be on the council meeting tonight, I'm not sure. But I think we have to get serious about this with all these letters we're getting. This gentleman with the crop cannons can't even come in and discuss it, then I think we should. Just for the record, we're following protocol here, according to the solicitor. We're following what you're supposed to do with the Right to Farm Act. You're supposed to notice the farmers.
That's correct, yes.
And then what's the procedure if a farmer doesn't respond?
Well, you move from the Right to Farm Act in your ordinance, I notice the farmers, to section 3-1.2, loudness of sound-producing equipment, specifically sections B and D. And in that instance, because you haven't heard, the farmer has a right to be notified and to say that they want to have a meeting on it, actually called a work session, to discuss the matter. So the next step is to send a warning to the farmer under this section, 3-1.2, to say that it's a warning, the noise is annoying the neighbors as it is under the statute, and the first one is a, is a, is a warning. Farmer at that point can ask for a work session at that point. If you don't get it again, then the fines start. Hundred dollars for the second offense, $200 for the third offense, $300 for the fourth offense, and $500 or 30 days in jail. And it's a misdemeanor.
So we are right now at the point where he's still got, he or she, whoever it is, has the opportunity to respond.
That's correct, yes.
So our, I just, I know the public's frustrated with this, but our hands are kind of like tied together on the proceed, we have to follow protocol, we have to follow.
That's correct, yes. I'd recommend a cease and desist at the same time, just to keep things moving along. I'm assuming that the defense, if it, if it got to court, would be that a crop cannon is a necessary function of operating a farm of that nature. I don't know that yet, but I think that, that the process allows for that, but you need to keep the process going. It's been the notification under the ordinance and statute. The next step is enforcement under the quoted ordinance.
The problem that I see, if we keep waiting, is that he's going to keep doing this. If it's going to take six weeks or something to eventually happen to kind of prohibit him from doing this, then the growing season's going to be over.
Correct.
And it's only going to start up next year because he's going to say, well, I got away with it last year, I'm going to do it again this year. And I don't know who it is, and I feel for the guy because he's trying to make a living, but also he's got to be, you know, conscious of the neighbors around him. And, you know, I talked to Tyler Young. He uses lasers and I guess they use big Pro Eyes or something from what my understanding is.
They actually use the Hawk Call.
Hawk Call, yeah, right. I heard that today too. So if some of the farmers can do that, I'm not sure why this farmer can't do that. I mean, there's a man who knows what's going on right there.
I'm Skip Paul from Wishing Stone Farm. I don't grow sweet corn. But I have grown it in the past. And the deal is that the birds go after the corn right when it's at the peak. It's picking quality. You go 10 days after that, it turns, everybody's got an old piece of sweet corn, it tastes like starch. So when the sugar's at the highest, the birds want it. And that corn goes by that maximum sugar content, the birds move on to something else. They're going for the sugar and water. If it's a drought year, they're even crazier. And I thought I was buying some corn for Tyler the other day, he says, I gotta load you up because the, the birds are destroying this piece. If I don't get this, this pick tonight and clear it and cool it for a couple of days, dope is going to happen to the sweet corn. So it's always constantly moving. When you plant a field of corn, you plant five weeks worth of corn and it kind of comes in, and you move across that field and you're trying to move out of it. So he's using lasers, you know, screaming birds and all this other stuff. You need to kind of, animals get very, just like deer, they get very used to one application of a deterrent. So you've got to kind of mix it up. But the fields they're protecting, it's really for 10 days at a time. And it may, it might sound like they're trying to drive you crazy, but now he's setting a cannon over here. That's because the corn over there is ripe, the other one, we had it 10 days ago, it's, let the birds have it. Like, that's what they do a lot of times. They want to, they don't, they can't even sell the corn, they don't even bother. So as a farmer that doesn't even grow sweet corn, I understand what he's going through because the deer problem in town is absolutely driving us. We lose over $15,000 in deer predation, so I understand what he's after. So it's, I think the right to farm, if you go to Westport, Massachusetts, the right to farm is pretty strong in Massachusetts. It may not be as strong on Rhode Island, but somebody's trying to protect their crop and he's trying to use other methods. I think it's just, it's just something you have to deal with, really, 30 days a year, really. Corn comes in from about July 15th, by August 30th, everybody's gone back to schools and stuff, and nobody's growing that much sweet corn. So it's really, it's just a 40-day period where the guys have got to farm, so.
May I ask you?
It's not a stop in the middle at night. I think they're just doing it when the birds are awake, so maybe 6 o'clock to, you know, yeah.
My question is, my weapons understanding is limited to torpedoes and we're not using any of them. But I'm wondering if there's, should I see when the crop cannon discharges, should I see at least one bird come out of wherever it is? Is that an expectation? Because I, I have never seen birds rising from any, any time I've been out. I don't have the duration of Councilor Mataronis, but I have been out for some periods of time of a half an hour here, a half an hour there. I don't see any birds coming out.
Because you're trying to get, you're trying to get the, you're trying to create an environment, you don't want the birds to get in.
They never come in.
If 300 birds come out, you've already lost that.
All right, fine.
So it's trying to keep them, or you can push the cannons, push them down to, sometimes the cannons are pushing them into the old corn, which they'll still eat.
Got it.
It's not ruining it.
Okay. By torpedo logic, never mind. Thank you.
My comment, Skip, was that just asking this guy to come in and see if we can discuss something to try to tail some of this activity.
Yeah.
You know, that's all, that's all we want him to do, come in and.
It would be Cole or Ian and Tyler.
Tyler said it wasn't him. I asked him, I haven't been to see, I don't know Cole's son, so. But I mean, just if he comes and talks to us and says, you know, is there a way around this so it's not disturbing the whole neighborhood? Or maybe not start at 6 o'clock or, you know, just come in and talk to us, that's all.
If I could, I could ask the solicitor just to comment on, in the statutes of Rhode Island, the Right to Farm Act 2-23-6, it says the provisions of this chapter do not apply to agricultural operations conducted in a malicious or negligent manner. Then there's a comma, so I'll pause. So is a malicious or negligent manner going on here? And Skip Paul's telling us that they're chasing corn because it's going in different directions, so he has to move his crop cannons. Is he accountable to move his crop cannons to mitigate the noise to the neighbors? I mean, what do you consider malicious and negligent? If you just put them somewhere just to be malicious and negligent? Well, typically in matters of this nature, it would be if the neighbor complained about the crop cannons. So what the farmer did is, is, you know, positioned the crop cannons next to where the neighbor is and just started firing to the annoyance of it. There's a lot of cases like that as to what constitutes malicious behavior. That would be it. If the farmer can demonstrate, like Mr. Paul said, that he's got a program for the crop cannons and it follows current agricultural practices, then a finding of malicious behavior or annoying behavior would not, not be found in court. Right. So who, who makes that decision? I mean, you can get an overhead of, of the land he's using, where his crops are and where his cannons should be. That is pretty simple to me, you know? So why can't we, you know, who makes that determination? Gets the, the overhead of that, sees where the cannons are and if they're acting in a malicious or negligent manner? The farmer has two steps. The first step is, is under your ordinances and, and the statute. They can come in for a work session and say, look, this is what I'm doing. Make the same pitch that Mr. Paul did in saying, I, you know, I have this corn, it's at the peak. This is where the cannons are, this is how I grew it, this is why I'm doing this. That's in the first instance. If the town wasn't satisfied with that and there was an enforcement action in court, it would be up to the court. Because it also says in 223.7, if any provision of this chapter, determination made under this chapter, application of this chapter to any person, agency, circumstances held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, invalid by a court or competent jurisdiction. Is this a competent jurisdiction where we're sitting right now? It doesn't, doesn't get to the court of competent jurisdiction until the town exercises its ordinance. In other words, if there's nothing that happens here, it doesn't get to court. The court of competent jurisdiction that they're talking about in that section would be Newport Superior Court. Thank you for answering that mystery to me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll be right back to you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Steve Marr. I live on 21 Seaspray Way. I watched the video last week with regards to where the corn was being. I just want to make sure you're aware that south of Seaspray Way, there is corn from West Main Road to the water. I've been dealing with this since 2017. Crop cannons start between 5:30 and 6:00 AM every day. They run until 8:30 at night. It's, it's very, very disruptive. I called the police in 2018, they said there's nothing we can do. I called the Rhode Island Department of Agriculture in 2020 during COVID because most of the people in my neighborhood were going insane with these blasts going off constantly. They said we were going to send a guy out, and at that time it was Walker. So we're going to send a guy out to talk to Cole Walker. And I said, well, I'll talk to Cole, I fished with him at the bottom of Town Way, but never had a chance to do it, and nothing ever became of it. So it's, it's very, very frustrating. I've had pets that hide under the bed for the whole day. Got to close all the windows, turn the air conditioning on so, so they don't hear the blasts. And I'll give you one, Mr. Solicitor, you made a comment that they're allowed to go to 50 decibels during the day, is that correct? I'll tell you a story about a gentleman pulled up on a motorcycle on the corner of Madden Way, Seaspray Way, right on the corner of my house. He got off and he was taking equipment off his motorcycle. And I was on my deck having coffee. Hey, how you doing? He says, hey, I'm just going to do some survey work here. I said, hey, have a good day. He's unloaded his equipment, the cannon goes off. This guy hit the deck, flat on the ground, covered his head. The second shot went off, he's, he's looking around and looking at me, and I said, it's okay. He said, what, what is this going on? And when the third and fourth went off, I said, it's a crop can. This is, this is what they do to keep birds out of the corn. He says, I'm a combat vet, I'm shaking like a leaf right now. So this is what we live, I've lived with it since 2017. a leaf right now. So this is what we live. I've lived with it since 2017. I'd love to be able to support the local farmers and buy product from them, but I will not because I can't live with these cannons going off in our neighborhood. It's so disruptive. So my two cents were, you said 50 decibels?
It's, it's, it's 55 decibels during, essentially 55 decibels during the day, DVA. That's between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., it's 50 decibels.
Okay, so I'm going to give you.
High 50.
I'm going to give you Google's definition of 50 decibels. Is loud as a quiet conversation, a quiet suburb, a quiet office, or a quiet refrigerator. Nobody's going to hit the deck when a gun goes off 150 yards away and cover their head if it's as quiet as a refrigerator. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
You know, this is a farming community. The farmers have it hard enough as it is. Can't we just do something that be amiable? And it's not forever. It's for 30 days or 60 or 25 days. The cannon goes off side of me. I don't even hear it anymore. And I think we've got to be a little, a little more gentle with the farmer. The farmer is trying to put food in our plates. Don't keep hopping on them and messing them up and calling them on the carpet. I can see excessive things. But he's trying to make a living. Can't we put it on the back burner for those 30 days? You've got all the rest of the year to have your quietness. We got to adjust. It is a farming community. Everybody knew that when they, when they came to live here. Like, they don't want the cow mooing because it's hungry or it needs water. What? You knew there was a farm here. It's the same thing with all of these things. There may be things, I don't know anything about those cannons, but maybe there's something that isn't quite as loud. I don't know. It depends on the birds. Maybe, maybe they only fly from something really loud. I don't know. Is there something that, some kind of a noise that we cannot hear and they can that will keep them away? But please don't keep hurting our farmers and our food that we're supposed to be trying to eat. 30 days or 45 days out of a year? Give me a break.
It's July and August.
I was wondering if somebody documented exactly how many days. Is it 30? Is it 50? Is it 60?
It started July 6th.
So we got about a month.
It did stop today, Mr. Mataronis. And they, I don't know why, but it started going off in the morning and then.
I have another question. What do other farmers do? The other, I heard about the Youngs. What are the other implementations of keeping the birds in? Skip, do you know what other people?
There's laser beams that they can fly above the corn and it disturbs the birds. Laser beams constantly going around in circles. Then they have distress calls, basically harmful sounds. They have a bird that they're bringing a snack and they record it and then they, they're on a loudspeaker and they're like, wow, I don't want to hear that. And that's basically what it is. But it's, all these things, birds eventually, like they figure out that, oh, this isn't as bad as it sounds. But the thing is, with sweet corn, you're really moving around constantly. So it's, 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 it's not like somebody's going to be there for like, you know, like tomatoes take 90 days to grow. You're not banging, you know, for 90 days, you're not banging off. And corn is moving. It's really, it's just sweet corn. The birds are violent. Though the vineyard, in the past, when Sagat Vineyards was really a farm, and they did grow grapes, which they really don't do anymore. They had, in fact, I bought a can from them a couple of years ago. They didn't need it anymore because they're not growing anything anymore. The only thing that Sagat Vineyards is really doing is growing grapes for another vineyard over in Portsmouth.
Can you have a lower amount of this, can you lower the loudness of the cannons?
You can control how much. It's propane. So it depends how much propane they put in the can of birds.
So there is a way of lowering?
It can be a louder, lesser loud banging.
Right. You can change the loudness and you can change the duration, the interval between, between explosions.
But that, but that's all we're asking for this guy to come in and talk with us, okay?
Yeah.
See if we can work something out. We're not, Bob, we're certainly not saying you can't grow corn. You can't do this. I'm a fisherman. I know what it's like. We're all going through the same problems, okay? Everything, the cost of running the business keeps going up and up. Profit level keeps going down, down and down. I'm not saying to cut this guy down, but what I'm saying, if we keep waiting on it, he's just going to get the attitude, well, you know, I got another six weeks to go, so I'll put her off for another two weeks. Then they'll meet another two weeks. So I, so I'll be done and it'll be gone by. But then it's going to start again next year. If we can pull him in now and say, no, even if it's over the winter, let's try to come to some kind of solution where we can stop this, all this noise. And maybe once an hour, whether that'll do it or not, I don't know. I'm not a farmer, so I'm not sure. But I know Tyler Young, I don't believe he's using cannons, is he, Skip?
He did this year because I could hear it, but it was not loud.
Right.
I'm not, I'm almost next door to him.
When Bob and I went up to Kate Almey's, the ones they had were pretty loud and they were going off quite frequently. The ones across the street, I don't know how far down they were, but they weren't as loud as the ones in case. But I guess whoever it is, the corn was at its peak when it was, when the cannons were caked. And now it must be across the street. So that's why they moved the cannons. So Kate's not having a big problem anymore. But she'll have it again next.
You know, it's, it's all a matter of time. And once you hear it, it never leaves your head. You know, if you ever live in that area, you will wake up at 2:00 a.m. to go to the bathroom and you're hearing them. And you have to pause to go, are they still on? It never leaves your head. It won't be till like probably December, they'll stop hearing them. And they will be turned off probably September. And I think with everything that's being said, it's great to hear from a farmer about like explaining the grids of corn that are grown at peak at different times. And that's why the corns, the crop cannons are being moved around. But one of the obvious things to me that I see is there is no other deterrent being used. And this started, but back at least 2015. And back then, I made quite a few phone calls and contacts, not just with the DEM, but with other farm, corn farmers around the state. And since back then, and even this year, I've talked to a few others, South County, Warwick, Warren, they don't use crop cannons. I'll ask them if they're using crop cannons. And they're not using them because it pissed the neighbors off. And they went to other things like the, the lasers, if they were on, with the DEM and the URI program, they'll use the laser, they'll use the sound machines, they'll use, believe it or not, the Mylar flags, the Mylar ball, the eyes. There's even a corn grower in Warwick that made his own zip line to, I don't know how it works, but he uses that. And he'll keep a crop cannon just in case something breaks and he'll use it for a day or two. But most of the farmers have said they don't want to use them because they don't want to upset their neighbors. And what they do is, what's recommended, even from the crop cannon manufacturers, is they use like six of everything. Because as Skip was saying, the birds get used to everything. So you've got to kind of, you do have to mix it up. And one of the things that does aggravate me about this farmer, there's not one other thing except the crop cannon from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., four shots every four minutes, seven days a week. And he's absolutely correct, July 6th, and it will go to September. And yeah, okay, so we're supposed to put up with it, but this is our summer. This is why we live here. And I'm not sitting out there like with my feet in the pool. I'm out there trying to garden, basically, you know, homesteading. I can't be outside. You know, but basically, it's like, my next thing is I'm going to have my ears tested. So there is a lot to talk about. Like, why aren't other things being used? It also might be able to check the decibel level. 55 decibel, as you noted, Mr. Solicitor, is what goes on in a quiet room, which is around here. Mr. Mataronis, I'm sure you heard those guns.
Yeah.
And it, it ain't a quiet room.
No.
It, I shot a lot of 12-gauge shotgun since I was 10 years old. And it's every part of a 12-gauge shotgun.
The thing is, we don't want to do anything to hurt this guy. We just.
Absolutely not.
Come in, talk to us. Let's see what some other farmers are doing. See if you can do that. So everybody can live in peace. That's all.
I would love it.
So I don't know what the next step is.
Registered letters, send the cruiser over and.
Is the way that the police chief could go there during the day or one of the police officers and just notify him that the council wants to talk to him?
Well, that's what I was just saying.
Oh, okay.
It's my understanding, we don't know who owns these crop guns. Is that correct?
That's what I mean. When they're there and they're going off.
Well, the elephant, the elephant in the room is, I think we all know who, whose cannons they have.
I don't want to say.
And I don't want to say his name either, just in case it's not that person.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go to the farmer. It could go to the property owner.
Yeah.
We know who the property owner is. We could notify the property.
Yeah, have the police officer drop something off.
My understanding, the property owner was notified.
Property owners were notified.
That's right. But we're talking about a hand delivery of a note, of a summons that says, come and talk to us.
Yeah.
Is that a legal, I guess it's a.
Please call the town hall between hours or so.
I wouldn't say call because that's what they did in there. I asked for written comments and they said they would give it to me and I got it from no one.
Let me make a suggestion. Draft a cease and desist. Also, the first warning under the ordinance. We can tell them we're going to set the matter down for a discussion at your next meeting. But at least you've started the ball rolling on enforcement. And I think if you do that, that'll make it so that it doesn't take the six, eight, nine, 10 weeks that it ordinarily would. We'll draft it. We'll have it sent out. Property owner and farmer.
So I think what it needs to be is, and I'm willing to sit on it, maybe Bob or
Yeah, let's establish, let's establish.
I don't want to do it at a council meeting.
No.
Because everybody's going to be, oh, he's the guy that's doing it. Let's get him. You know? I don't want that kind of atmosphere.
Let's establish a workshop in which we involve the administrator, two of us, the DEM. In other words, I'd like to know what the alternatives that are being prescribed are. I don't know what they are now. I mean, I know what they, what they once were, but perhaps there's something more. Perhaps lasers have been found to be in effect, whatever. So that we educate ourselves and then we're ready to receive this person. So I would solicit a motion to establish a group that consists of.
Can we get your attention for that workshop?
Yes.
I think it does, I don't want to be it. And I don't know if it's anybody, like, how you would decide, but a farmer, a council person, a DEM, I think a non, one of those people needs to be on that workshop.
An offended party.
An offended party.
I'll call it that. A person who's been affected by it.
With some experience living around them.
Well, that gentleman that stood up, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but maybe he would want to.
Steve Marr.
Steve. Fine.
We'll include him. Would you like to?
Yeah, sure.
They just finished a field next to our neighbor's house and they'll be rotating, I think, into next to our house next.
I don't think so.
No? You think they're done forever?
I think they're done.
You think they're done forever?
Crop cannon, well, I haven't seen the crop cannon actually disappear. But I haven't heard it since yesterday about 9:30. The fire screeching bowls out there for bringing the neck of the bird, those were, they were taking those down yesterday about 9:30, 10 o'clock also.
If it does turn back on, you can come over to our house and literally have the meeting while they're going off.
I say that quite seriously. Those who are afflicted, I would ask you to contact me and we'll, we'll assemble the group in situ if we need to get a better sense of it.
I would ask, I think Gary's right about, if you let this thing drag on till next growing season, you might not have solved the problem or gotten it down the road. I think you should go your path and also the solicitor's path at the same time. Because you're not doing anything to the person to stop the action. You're just giving them official notice to bring them, trying to bring them to the table again. If you just have an organizational meeting to get yourself up to speed and wait to do that, then you're, I think you're so far down the road, you might not get this winner to work with them. And they're, right, to work on some other abatement technology or, or kind of get things scheduled in a way that is effective.
Andrew, we're going to.
The proposal is for concurrent, a concurrent action.
Right.
The cease and desist.
We'll publish the cease and desist at the, tomorrow and we'll convene, or we'll establish the time that the group will meet tomorrow.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Can you read the motion back?
To draft a cease and desist, that's the first warning, and put the matter on the agenda for the next council meeting, starting the enforcement's sent to the property owner and the farmer. Concurrently, develop a group that will meet in a workshop. That will be two town council members, a member of DEM, the administrator, and an offended party. And you didn't get any farther with when you were going to make a meeting or gather that group.
That group would be appointed tomorrow and then, and then consistent with their availability, we would meet as soon as possible.
And who's doing that appointment tomorrow?
Me.
Okay. Okay. So then amending that, the, the said group will be appointed by the town council president on August 11th.
And Steve Marr is the.
Right. We have, we have Steve. We need a farmer, an offended.
So I'd like to, I'd like to be on the committee. Considered for it.
Well, I'm in a quandary. I do their work. I don't have any contracts or anything with them, but I do their electrical work.
How many on it? See, he hasn't named it yet. I'm just.
Yeah, Bob and I.
All right. That's the motion. Is there any further discussion? I just figured out who the two counselors would be.
Bob's out. That's fine.
Hi. Are you?
I'm recusing.
Three are in favor and Counselor Galumbeski recuses. Thank you for the attention you've devoted to this.
Thank you.
The next item of business is announcements. Are there any? Hearing none, the approval of the minutes of July 20th.
Motion approved July 20, 2023, town council meeting unless anybody has any corrections or wants to discuss it.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. There are four department head reports from the clerk, the fire chief, the police chief, and the administrator.
Motion to place all four on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place on file. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a response from the Little Compton Historical Society Executive Director, Marjorie O'Toole, regarding the possible demolition of the fire barn Hearst House on the Commons. In her letter, she strongly encourages the town not to destroy this or any other historic building on the Commons that is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. We could debate the question of whether there's purview here. I'm going to say that I would like to take, we had four designs, if you recall, of this parking lot arrangement. I'm going to propose that we return it to the administrator to review and see if, if a version that does not involve the destruction of a building can be accommodated. And with that knowledge, then we can take the following action. This is not a project that is, yeah, an emergency. It doesn't have to be done right now. In fact, there is question as to whether people think the Commons parking areas are overloaded. Lots of people say, I can, I can always find a place to park. I can tell you that in the, in the summer, in the school year, that's not the case, looking up and down the common. So, all of that to say, we need to do this and do it right. And we don't need to demolish a building. So I would like to. So I would like to remand this to the administrator for review and returns.
So move. Second.
Discussion on that.
Does Marjorie have any comment on her letter that she'd like to add to the council?
She here?
I think just one other remaining piece of the letter is that if in fact parking lot is built, it is also important that that parking lot be shielded from view, from anyone on the Commons in order to protect what preservationists would call the historic viewscape. So that, you know, using landscaping or other techniques, if you're on the Commons, you don't realize that there's a parking lot there.
Well, thank you.
One thing I'd like to say, when we were having that discussion with the seniors, they were talking.
We, we, I was trying to say that we, the council.
Right.
Made a motion to not do anything with that building.
To see if we could.
Planning was done.
To see if it could be a facility for the seniors at some point in the future.
That was utilized and you already made a motion and it was approved, that nothing would happen to that building.
Right. So I'd be willing to sit in with you Tony on, when you get some diagrams if you want. You can call me up and go over them, okay?
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed?
Do we have another and, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm one of those people that leaves town in the mornings. I come back at night and I'm just here on the weekend. What's the deal with the parking lot? Isn't Veterans Field available? Is it a matter of walking a little further? I, I honestly, I don't understand the need for it.
The need for a parking lot?
Yeah.
It, it was given to the town as a donation by the entity that sold to the ag trust the majority of the property. And its purpose was specifically to have a town parking lot there. We had been discussing that, that need that was, as some perceived. Again, this project is, is immature in its, in its implementation. So we are, we want to not proceed too far down a path that doesn't involve a need. And we also now want to consider the fact that we've received advice from people who are skilled in it to say, you ought not take down buildings in the town commons for any reason.
Can I ask quickly, if we don't put a parking lot there, do we relinquish that six tenths of an acre that was donated to us?
No, it's, it's now part of Lot 8, so it's, it belongs to the town and it is not restricted in its, as is the remainder obviously of the land with an agricultural deed. So it's, it's, it no longer exists on its own. It's part of Lot 8. Did I finish the vote or?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The next item of business.
Yes, the votes.
Remember voting.
Probably because I didn't, I generally don't, so.
To be clear, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The next item is new business, a vote to designate Anthony DeSisto Esquire as the alternate probate judge.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Secondly, a request from the opiate grants coordinator of the Newport Prevention Partners, Newport County Prevention Coalition, for the town to allow a commemorative banner and flags to remember 434 individuals who lost their lives in this year due to opioid overdose from, to fly those flags from August 28th to September 1st. Now, the request was to place them at the town hall. If you recall, last year we flew those flags on Pike's Peak. And because of the nature of the building efforts at the town hall, I don't think the courtyard is an appropriate place for a display of public flags. And I would propose that our motion would approve the flying of these flags and that that flying would be on Pike's Peak due to.
So move.
Second.
Discussion on that. Is there anyone here associated with the request?
I work for anti-prevention, I am not the opiates grant coordinator, but I have spearheaded this project in the past. It was meant to be requested on Pike's Peak, but no one knows what I'm talking about at work when I say Pike's Peak, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Obviously, the 434 individuals who lost their lives are Rhode Islanders?
In Rhode Island, and it was last year. The numbers aren't available for last year until the end of June. So the year before it was 235, ah, 435.
I mean, vote.
You need to.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I think Barbara wanted to say something.
What I wanted to know was, you allow one flag. How can you say no to other flags?
This is 434 flag penance that are not, that are in the ground. They're not going to be flown from the town flag. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. A request from the police chief to amend Little Compton Police Department's policy regarding the reserve officer, reserve police officer program and the rate of pay designated.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. A request from the police chief to authorize the purchase of a new police patrol vehicle to supplement the current fleet, based on the quotes received.
Is this a hybrid chief?
No, it's not. It's a F-150 pickup truck. We're not gonna use it for patrol, we're gonna use it for relatively everything else. We've been doing a lot of obviously closing the Commons down for events during the summer. So to move around the barriers, our cones during the church fair, et cetera.
Gotta put, gotta put the lights and stuff on it and.
Yeah, it's gonna have a minimal light package, but we're not gonna use it for patrol.
We'll have the town.
It'll be unmarked to select a truck.
I'll approve it because it's a Ford. I'll, I'll move it rather.
I think you should get a Porsche for that.
So. Chief, so this won't rack up big mileage on it?
No, not at all. We're hoping to have this for several years. We can forget for random tasks.
Sure.
Not for.
I'll make the motion.
I think Paul did. I already made.
I'll second.
The motion's made and seconded, due approval of the chairman. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just ask a question. How many vehicles are in the fleet right now?
In the police fleet, we have two primary patrol vehicles, two backup patrol vehicles, one, two detail cars that the reserves use for construction details on the roadway. My car, the deputy chief's car, and the detective's car. So that is 6:9. Math correcting?
It is.
Yes.
So that's almost.
This will be 10. This will be 10. We're not gonna trade in a vehicle at this time. Normally, we trade in a vehicle.
So that's almost a, a vehicle per person.
You would think, yeah. Almost there.
But the ones that are used for details are the ones that have got a lot of road miles on them.
There, both of those are over 130,000 miles. So we don't, we don't want to use those for patrol or every day. They basically drive to one point, park, turn the lights on, and then drive back to the, the station.
So you got a call for a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a recommendation from the administrator to award the contract for repair of Public Safety Complex floor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, it is their discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, a request from Kimberly Machado to hold her wedding ceremony in Wilbur Woods on August 17th, 2025.
I'll make the motion, Gus.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.